Rectangles, do you mean there's bluestone sitting there?
Yeah.
That's waiting, that's what we had-
That was material that was brought in-
It was purchased.
...that would never lay down. I don't think that was removed. What was removed was concrete.
Well, yeah.
This was broken, this was poured concrete patio, all of it.
Okay, okay. So there was not bluestone there?
Correct.
Correct. I mean, here's my, here's why I ask. Your letter to us says that the patio has been substantially reduced. This will- You had a car, minor car accident-
Right.
-from which I hope you've recovered-
Yeah.
And that caused the thing to be adjourned.
Right.
Right? At that time, the patio was 900 square feet as you presented it to us. Now it's 830, which is a difference of 70 square feet. That doesn't sound very substantial to me. But the area that is now not covered either by concrete or bluestone, just from my, you know, visual observation, looks to be somewhat more substantial than 70 square feet.
Yes, no, I think-
And little losses by your numbers.
I think what happened is, we'd come to conclusion that the whole back had to come out. That was not part of, that would have been 1,300 and change, as I recall. It's this whole back part that comes out from what was originally poured concrete, that's reducing that number down to even 900, then further down to 870. This actual poured concrete patio, pre-existing, was more or less, wow, 1,300, I guess, 1,300 some odd square feet.
Okay. So your original letter said, "We've already reduced it by 479."
Right.
You went from 1,300 roughly, reduced it by 479 to 900. And now you've taken, what, 70 around?
Some out over here, and we've taken this out over here. We don't really need that over there.
Now, the bluestone rectangles that are sitting there on the side, what's their future?
They have to be picked up and brought out. But quite frankly, as soon as we got to stop work, or everything stopped.
Okay, they're not going back in?
They're not, there's no place for them to go.
Okay. Now, I mean, one further question. You are over by 28 percent. And I understand you bought the house that was already there.
Correct.
28 percent is more than we usually consider, at least approve. And, I mean, as I look at the house, I mean, it's obviously a nice house, and the pool and the patio are also very, very well thought out and well presented. Sorry, to have a whole area between the house and the pool patio. I mean, you could be much closer to what's required under the code and still have a perfectly good patio leading out to the pool.
Right. It would be, at this point now, here is the, you can see the sidelines of the house, here and here. This is the house. The patio is confined to behind the house. All of the patio that's beyond the sides of the house has been removed. This has all been removed. It would be very awkward in any pool scape to come out from the back of a house. You'd have to practically plant an island between the pool and the house in order to reduce that coverage. And granted, if I were redesigning this from the get-go, I'd bring the pool possibly closer to the house to maybe reduce that amount of coverage there. But this pool is where it is, and the house is where it is. And so to get from the house to the pool, and this little bit of space here and now, that's all I have left to cover it. I would, like I said, I'd be creating almost false gardens, in a sense, to reduce the coverage at this point.
I'm tempted to ask you, what would be a valid move in the pool? But I think you have-
Please don't. Don't do that to us.
Any questions or comments from the board?
No.
Okay. I mean, I do think the number is high. But it is also flatscape that doesn't interfere with the view aligned to the width of the house. And some effort has been made, in good faith, to reduce the numbers to get to a point which is not as grievous as it was originally. So with some degree of discomfort, I will move to approve the application. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, let's vote from the right, Tom.
Right, yes.
Okay.
Yes?
Yes.
Yes. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thanks very much.
All right. Continuing with my flexible scheduling, the next matter I would like to have on is Provenzano on Half Moon Lane.
Unfortunately, our engineer backed out at the last minute, so-
He's not supporting the application?
Oh, he- Yeah, absolutely is, but I spoke to him before. But unfortunately, I don't have a roster.
Okay, look, you were here, you were here in November, and-
Yeah, we were returning. So, as you remember, we were trying to renovate our patio with new bluestone. And in doing that, we wanted to expand the patio to make it larger. And we were going to do that both in the southern direction as well as in the eastern direction. And we were going 16 percent over a lot of coverage. So what we did was, we reduced the patio to as much as we possibly could to allow us to bring this stuff, you want to build our house. So we have gone from 450, we now went from the 450 square feet to the 4 square feet. We went from the, we took 100 square feet out of step. And the sitting wall that is there is going to help us with the runoff as for the engineers. And we also reviewed from the, from our engineers, a evaluation of our neighborhood to show the block coverage and how, and how we compare the block coverage across the neighborhood. So now we're down to that point.
Okay. In a nutshell, when you were here before, as you said, you wanted to essentially replace the present patio with a new one.
Right.
Extend it a bit toward the elevated plan-
Right.
-behind you, so you can get into the backyard with some steps. And I think what we questioned was why you needed to add to that existing patio, new patio to the south.
Right.
And you have very graciously withdrawn that part of the application.
And the sitting wall there, too.
Okay, the sitting wall, which would have been with the new patio.
Right.
The, which would be next to the patio that's already there, which you're replacing, remains in the application.
Right.
Okay.
Surrounding square stairwell.
All right. I went back to the property again, just to make sure I understood what you were doing. And apparently, for a change, I do. And it seems to me that what you are proposing now is reasonable and more limited. And I, for one, appreciate you considering what you said before in changing the application. Any board members want to comment on this one, or ask questions?
No.
No.
Okay. We'll vote from the left, starting with Tom, because-
Second.
Only a second.
I will second it, yeah.
Thank you. We're going to exclude Evan because he was unaccountably late. Vote from the left and-
He's like a suitable party.
Yes.
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 Good. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Tell your engineer, he's a bad man. All right. Next up, Gray Rock Terrace, Davis. Have you seen a copy of the letter that came in?
I did not, but I-
We have, we have two.
I heard about it.
Okay.
Actually, I, no, I did see it, fine. I think you just need two letters, correct?
The one from Sokol and-
And one more from-
Right.
So, Doug Mcclair for the Davises at Seven Gray Rock Terrace. My client has purchased the house. Garage, the existing garage is very small. They would park two cars in a garage. It would also like some room for snowblower and car pools. They don't have those rooms, that room right now. So we are proposing rebuilding the garage into a two-car garage. And at the same time, dressing it up a bit to make it a little more attractive from the street front. Right now, you just see the garage door and the flat side of the gable. So we're adding the gable face in front. In terms of the neighborhood, I put together a chart based on the Greenberg property cards to show how it relates in scale with the coverage. One thing I'll point out about the Greenberg, when we do this, our only source is these property cards. And they only show houses and accessory buildings and decks. They don't show retaining walls and all the other things that everything counts as coverage. So, while we have about 50 percent of properties currently there are over, when you actually make a tour, and I tried to show that in the, this page with all the photos, it never prints as clearly as you would like it to. Meeting walls, there are a lot of patios. It's very hard to figure out exactly what the coverage is. I would suspect more of the properties are slightly over, if not similar. So I do not feel this would be extensively out of keeping with the rest of the neighborhood.
There are others tonight who suggest that the numbers are somewhat under what is really there. I mean, it's, every applicant-
Of course.
-says that or says nothing.
It's very hard to tell.
Nobody does it the other way.
Yeah. It's very hard to tell unless you get a survey, until you do a project, you can get a survey. And I know the building department decides to start trying to keep some kind of record so we have a better database to work from.
Right. They want the historical stuff to be retained and then used again as possible.
So, currently, we are, we are actually over the allowable right now by 82 square feet, which is about 3 percent. We'd like to, the increase puts us up at 3,065, which is 17 percent, which is really an increase of 14 percent.
Okay. All right, so the 14 percent you mentioned in your, in your cover note was the increase over existing, not what you-
Exactly.
Okay. So you agree the existing is 17.9?
Correct.
Okay. Just to be clear, the one-car garage that is there now is either going to be retained?
No, it's going to be, originally, as an architect, we always like to try and save things because we think it'll help the budget. But it's such a, it actually would be just simpler to knock it down.
Okay, but my point is, you're not adding two-car spaces to the north of the existing garage. The two-car garage you propose would cover the existing garage and one more space.
Correct. Correct.
And you're also expanding the asphalt drive, is that right?
Yes.
Okay, but that doesn't count, because it's a driveway.
Right. And the engineer has obviously taken that into his calculations, so and are working through planning board on that right now.
Okay. I did look at the property, and there is space on that side of the house. You're not, you're not going into a setback of any sort.
Correct.
And I also noticed that the house across the street, and the two houses down the street towards Cedar Lawn, all have either two or three-car garages already-
Correct.
-without going into all the Greenberg numbers and so forth. That struck me as equally important, because it keeps you in your proposal to be consistent with the houses in the neighborhood. I thank you for your submission. Any questions, comments from the board? Did I just break something before you- Okay. I will move the approval of this application as submitted. Do I revise? Do I have a second?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes. Yes.
Okay.
Very much.
Thank you.
Can we do first timers for the Beachwood Road?
You say 12?
Yes, sorry, I didn't say 12.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I was thinking, we do, thank you. I got it, yep. Oh. Last page, let's see what we got.
Yeah.
As I'm saying, I just asked if I had to refuse this. You are not listed.
Okay.
Okay, then I guess there's no issue.
May I?
Yes, please.
Can you take the mic down or just speak? We're not being recorded.
I think, you know, we were supposed to be recorded, but I don't know that we actually are being, so if you can use it comfortably, go ahead. If not, don't ruin your evening.
Steven Bassini and the architects represent first timers to a Beachwood. We're here before you to request that a variance from the rear four feet, or 2.6 feet, for a rear setback for the reconstruction and also extension of the existing wood deck in the back. This property is similar to one that came before you, this board, last year over here next door in Beachwood. The way these houses were built were, the house was built all the way to the west side, and the driveway was put in the middle. Then there's the large portion of the yard here on the right, the east side, which somewhere ranges at unusable, because you have to go across the driveway to really get to it. Plus, the property slopes down, you see, away from the house. So this really isn't usable in the yard area. They're, the main area, which is the deck. So what they're looking to do is, to get older, a number of yards left for the entertaining nature of the built, they might actually really make a larger place for the grill, table and chairs, and some other chairs, and some other furniture. Going out is a logical way, going tangler, just to really configure the furniture as well. You still need that separation from the house. Currently, the deck is 12 feet. We're asking to make it 17 feet. That would put it 2.6 feet over the side, the rear, a setback of 35 feet. The increase is only 7 percent over what is required. And as you see, height of the deck is about five, six feet over here in the corner. On the other end, it goes down to about four feet. It's not a monster thing, it's up in the air. In the backyard, also-
Four feet over the ground level.
Four feet over. It makes it sound like a step, you're right. It figures the property slopes down to the, to the east this way. So, as you can see, this is, in the back yard over here on the street, you can see there's a large row of erbe shrubs that go across. They're probably about 20 feet high, actually. So in the backyard, there's really nice screen. To the left of them is actually, because of the way the property is bulked up on the other side, to this side over here, it's far away from the latest property. And on this side, this is the one that just built the new deck last year and has a patio, and got a variance for that as well. So I don't think there is any objection, we've received any letters or notifications. But I think it's screened adequately here, and enough from here, and in the other single position. I think it's still in character, and I don't think it's excessive. And really, it's not, it's not there already, which is, so you can actually two and a half feet.
Okay, I went over there on Sunday and walked up the steps and looked at the deck. I mean, it's, it's an adequate deck now. And you could expand it by 3 feet without ever needing to be here. Why do you need the extra two and a half feet?
Right outside the west door is right here by the stairs, which really causes that whole area, the five feet outside, that five, six feet outside that is unusable. So then, this whole area sort of becomes unusable as far as putting any type of furniture out of comfort or situation.
That's where the grill is, huh?
Yeah, the grill, right. So you've got sliding glass doors right here, and then you've got the grill that's right here. But this area, as you come out the sliding glass door, this, this, and then the grill. This really becomes unusable. So what we're looking to do, you're left with this over here. They're really looking to push it out, they have, they have plans to put table and chairs here with a little cabinet here, a TV, and two little corner couches in that spot right there. They have a furniture layout and a panel, it's an idea. Where the people that they invited out there now for their parties, teenagers and adults, they know the capacity, and they're realizing that they need a certain amount of area to accommodate that. You're right, you don't have to come here for the extra three feet. We're asking for the five feet just because of the layout that they had in mind. And I didn't think it was very excessive, but yes, you're right.
Another thought, I mean, I did look at the surrounding area, and you're right, there are, there's a lot of coverage in the back. So the people in the house directly in back are not that going to be protected as the deck are already. But to the- Right. Thank you. From the back, there's an open area, and there's a house that's right there.
Sort of right, I see.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, I, I think your application would be enhanced if you or, you and your clients would undertake to provide screening in that area.
The only, I'd be willing to accept, the only thing is, is this property slopes down to four, six, eight feet here, any type of attic, and then the deck is five feet here. Any type of attic with screening for a house, then you're assuming the first story or so above, trying to screen their view, is 20-foot evergreen. You know, if I, even if I planned an eight-foot here, it would only come up to the bottom, to the ground level here. I don't know what type of attic with screening I can provide for that. In addition, I mean, you're, you're really, you're coming, you're seeing the corner of the second that's only coming out another five feet on the same corner that is already existing. The stairs would be built in the same spot, and this house is 10 feet below that level of this house. I know the opposite, why you'd say this is 10 feet above looming over, but it's a necessity situation, I'm not building a house.
Which one is 10 feet below?
This house down here. I mean, this is six, this is a, I did, two, four, six, eight, and by the time you get over here, you're 10 feet. So that's so far down that any type of screening on this property line would have to be, you wouldn't be able to get a tree or shrub or anything right now. We're trying to screen that back. But with an eight-foot tree here-
Yeah.
-it would be, the top of that tree would be to the bottom, the ground level of the deck. Screen the deck.
Right, but if the house that's neighboring is that much lower than your house, it would provide some screening because of the-
Is it from the yard we're concerned about, the people in the yard, or the-
It just, it just looks, it just looks like a gap. You know, I'm not, I'm not asking you to put up a, you know, balloon of some kind to prevent anybody from seeing anything, but it does look, it's a bear- and, you know, the neighbor may not complain, because neighbors don't normally do that. But I would, I would be, if I were the neighbor, I'd be grateful if there was some effort to shield the lawn from activity over there. It may not be perfect, but-
Okay. Look, Steve, if we can put in, if it's on the board, and we can put in something and everything, should approve it, and we were to plan something appropriate, I guess. I'd like to see where the house is, if it ends up in, if the house is sold another few feet down below, that's some evergreen shrubs, five feet high would work. If it's a little closer, then we're talking about five foot. Whose person is not going to be going to eight feet and then that, you know, five, six years, something like, I don't know if we're, that's what we're talking about. I know the CAC, I want to have something to say with that as well, but-
Well, you got a, are your clients here?
No.
Okay, we got to talk to them anyway.
I would gladly approve that, some type of screening there. I'm just going to the village, approve out of the village.
Who, who in the, who would you consult at the village?
The-
Over the logic committee?
I know the logic committee, I'm sorry. It's called the CAC? The ECP, I'm sorry, the C-
ECB, yeah.
Medicine, there's different CACs in the village.
Right, right.
BECP, that's what I was referring to. I forget what her name is, but she, you know, she's the planning consultant. I can consult them with her on the other property next door and some pages. I would allow that she-
Well, I, not, I don't want to bring you back again and draw this out. But I, I think what I would do is, well, first of all, does anybody else have questions, comments, observations?
Well, I had the same reaction you did when I looked at the porch. You know, it's easy to avoid this motley crew here by just cutting the deck back a little bit. But I understand your answer to Bruce's question.
Okay. Anything else over? Anything screening along the line, property line would be approved. Okay. So what I would do here is to move to approve this, subject to your consulting with your client with a proposal, consulting ECB, that would be, that would be helpful if you did. With a proposal about what you would do to screen that corner of the property. And we'll just have to consider that, we'll do it by telephone or something else. And if need be, we'll bring you back, but my intention would be not to.
More of an informal sort of issuing paperwork or something.
It's a condition, you know, I'll send you a letter which has this condition in it.
Okay.
So it's going to be met.
Yes.
But I just don't want to bring you back again to this test, or you're at 17 or 18 feet, whatever.
I appreciate it.
So that'll be my motion. Madam Secretary, you get that back?
I got it.
Okay. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, let's open all that up. Evan?
Yeah.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Good. Thank you. All right. Next up will be Mitchell on Rutter de Blaue Lane. Field Point, thank you very much. Okay, just for the record, I went to visit this property on Sunday. Louise apparently was five feet behind me the entire, entire day. And they're in Field Point.
Yes.
And so Field Point has got very strict limits on what people can do and so forth. And any of these applications have to go through Field Point. Our materials, at least my set, did not even- So I mentioned to Mr. Mitchell that it would be a great idea to bring it along today. And this is it, and I will- scan it for a second. Okay. It looks like they have a bunch of conditions about what you have to do during construction and that sort of thing, but overall, they said, they said yes, subject to that. And, Shaver, there's-
Yep.
For the record. Okay, go ahead, please.
Okay. This is an application to legalize existing patio, and also to install a spot tub on that patio. There are a number of variances that are required, one being exceeded coverage. But if you look at the calculations, due to the small plot size, the 20,000 square foot zone, the lot is only 810 square feet, so meaning what's required. It's difficult, and the patio in the inch, by one second, so we're all, the existing old roof is already 28, and it's 16, 28 percent of the 16 percent zone. Again, that's what's already there. Legalizing the existing deck, I'm sorry, the existing patio, only increases that. The other variance that's required is, this tub will be located in what is the side yard. It's a 15, 15-foot requirement that is eight feet one from the corner of the property, corner of the house to the property line. There is a 10-foot buffer between the property line and the edge of the pavement. And again, it is, conditions are not increasing. Lastly, the tub will be located less than 20 feet from the property line. Actually, 15 feet two, to, from the corner of the tub to the property line. Again, there is a buffer there, and it does not go out any further than any of the lines of the building. There was a note, I believe, in the review from the building department that it extends beyond the footprint of the building. And previous submission to the plan, well, it did show it, but it was within, there's a covered porch, and it's going to sit on it. It was still within the footprint of the covered porch, but it did extend beyond the footprint of the foundation. But we pulled it back now, so it will-
Okay. The description of the application is far more daunting than I think you're actually going to do. I mean, the hot tub would be under the existing deck-
Correct.
-on an existing patio-
Correct.
-and screened by lattice?
Yes. Full lattice walls on all three sides, the fourth wall is the foundation wall.
Some of that lattice has to be replaced, right?
Yeah, it's going to be replaced, yes.
All of it's going to be replaced.
Yeah, all of it's going to be replaced, yes. And there is some generous landscape screen all along that side of the property, so.
What's, what's the, the gap in the lattice screen to be in the lattice?
Three quarters of an inch.
Okay.
There are going to be two and a half inch slats, two by three, one by three slats, with a three-quarter inch gap.
Okay. Is the 20 feet that is causing trouble, is it 20 feet from, from where the lattice will be, the edge of the patio? Is the twenty feet that is causing trouble, is it twenty feet from, from where the lattice will be, the edge of the patio to...
The ordinance states that the boot can't be located within a twenty-foot buffer from the property line.
Right.
So the, the lattice is within that twenty, well, further within that twenty-foot buffer.
Is, is this, is this going to be as a patio, whatever you're going to do, going to be within twenty feet of Rutter de Walle Lane?
The existing patio is, yes.
Okay, I mean, just from observation, it looks like the longest twenty feet I've seen in a while.
Yeah, that, there's a ten-foot buffer from the property line to the edge of the pavement, so definitely visually is inspectable.
I see.
Additionally, this is, it's a road.
Yeah.
This is a road, and this is a road, so there are really no affected neighbors. The neighborhood to the east is a, there's a pretty good distance, thirty feet on this side to the property line. There's a thirty-foot setback on the east side, so there's a, there's a good distance between the two of them. Other than that, you know, this is all road.
Right. Right. Okay. Questions, comments?
Where's the lattice going?
So this is patio, which is all around, this part of the patio, the patio is here. The lattice will go, and so around that section, that's the screening porch, and that's where the tub is.
Okay.
I know where you came right here, right up to the black, you put that.
I, I was very glad I visited because just from the write-up, it looked like you were...
Looks like way more, yeah, yeah, yeah.
But I think, I think what you're proposing, given that it's under the deck, on the existing patio, and going to be well-screened, makes, makes some sense. So again, I will move the approval of this application. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, folks on the right, John?
Yes.
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 Yes. Okay. Thank you. That's it? Oh, no, wait.
Hello. Sarah. Mary's around.
Okay.
Is there a reason?
No. Uh, what, should I get the, the... Yeah, they could go to Sarah Plummer, or I could give them what I think comes into this year for you.
Sit in the background.
Yeah, okay.
I will, first of all, our question representing the Friday morning, this national notice is a resubmission of the material that was sent to the November meeting, resubmitted. All of it, just to make sure that everybody has... Based on our earlier discussions, we did, we are requesting variances for FAR, half-four coverage, uh, half-four, uh, the...
Increase.
Four, so we didn't have a discussion earlier when we were finding about the A increase, we can revisit that if you wanted to. We did between the October meeting and then November meeting, we made a modification to the front entry corridor of Detroit or Batuce Street. Look, I'll just quickly tip into the, so, so the issue with the setback is that the width of the property is this, the front unit setback is thirty-two, thirty-three, and it's thirty-two. So it's odd, a legal bill, but there are a lot given the, our goal is to try to, with any additional motion we have, let's try to look at this.
So the increase on Oak Street, on the Oak Street side?
Yes.
Is still, still a violation, but it is, as you proposed, it will be less of a violation by about a foot. That was there now.
Right, and, and the, the nuts on the ground plane is less by a foot, and on the upper plane is less by three feet, you know, on the, on the underground plane. So, you know, the next thing that we had focused on in the letter that we submitted, I think where we left off from the last meeting, was the discussion of the FAR.
Would you, we did not spend a lot of time, I have a lot of time, we could just go over the coverage.
Okay. The existing coverage right now is a few percentage, three, between three and four percent over allowable coverage, and where we're ending up is about nine percent over allowable. The reason that the coverage is not increasing very much is because there's a patio already, the location, there's a patio with a roof above it, or a location of the...
It's on the right hand side.
That's right. So right now, there's a patio, a patio with a covered patio in that area, and we are planning to occupy that same place, and there's, there's a false elevation, where I think we've indicated that where the patio is already in the area where the extension of the house is supposed to be. And the width is going beyond the existing patio just because of the required width to make it work and to make it better work, the, both the dining room and the bedroom, so it's wide, so it's very minimal.
Okay. So the increase in structures by three hundred square feet is the building you're adding, and taking out the deck of two fifty-four, which is in net plus fifty.
Right.
And your overall plus seventy, with some minor changes to...
The tanning walls and so forth.
Right. Okay. All right. Madam, we'll move on to FAR, if somebody has questions, and those two.
No.
Okay. So FAR, I think the real struggle that we're having with FAR is that the number that we're presenting to you is higher than what is, is higher than what is specifically proposed, and it's, that's the question, whether it's substantial or not. The first argument that we wanted to make, there's an argument to be made about neighborhood after...
What, what is the number?
It's a hundred and twenty-seven, I believe.
Okay.
Hundred and twenty-seven percent of allowable.
Option one.
Option one.
Right.
So just to review, this, this increase about the allowable is really related to how the attic is treated, if the attic is being treated. The goal of the client is to have the attic be a finished attic, accessed by a stair, so that it can be used for storage and help this relatively small house. So the way the code is in Irvin's, and if the, if this attic were unfinished and accessed by scuttle, just a drop-down stair, it would be at zero percent, I mean, it a hundred percent, so it wouldn't be asking for a variance for this same... If it's accessed, if that same, if that same attic is accessed by a stair as opposed to removable stair, it is, it goes up. I just confirm that that is, it goes up to a hundred percent. So whether, as soon as you access an attic by a stair, or you access, or you finish an attic, or whether it was accessed by a scuttle or anything, any kind of finishing that attic, the volume calculation increases. So there's three scenarios that we've been through. The first one is the proposed, where you see the attic is counted in six hundred and thirty square feet, because it's centered at a hundred percent. The second one is unfinished attic, attic accessed from the staircase. So the benefit of that is that there is a part of it, rather than being counted as a hundred percent part of it, because it's counted as fifty percent in that one, and that drops the percentage over to fourteen percent over allowable. And then the last option shows if we left the attic unfinished, put scuttle in, or basically took, took the stair out, they use the stairs, it's probably zero percent. And I bring this up for a few reasons, but it goes to impact, right? And I think what the hundred and twenty-seven percent, if we look at that as a measure of the impact or the measure of the substantiality of the proposed variance, it seems like a lot because of the number. But if you compare it to the fact that there's a by right version, that is the exact same size, it's what we're showing, the same volume, that would have the exact same impact on the neighbors, and that would be our argument to say, like, in this case, the one twenty-seven isn't substantial, because we could simply pull the stair out, and we could finish the attic, and we would be at allowable level. So that, that's really our major argument. I mean, we could go through the neighborhood, we could have neighborhood analysis, and one of the things that I just wanted to point out about the neighborhood analysis, if you look at the FAR calculations, we went through there, and we did site visits, and did a much more robust review of that, and all the houses where the attic is being counted at a hundred percent are in this range, they have an average of about a hundred and thirty percent over. And so there's only three that we did that to in neighborhood houses, because we can't get inside a house, we don't know what we have a stair on. So if you take those three and average them, you're at the same level. So I think also in terms of character, the neighborhood, if you take down houses and say, like, if all these attics were finished, where would the standard be? It would be about a hundred and thirty percent. So from both of those sides, whether it's benefit to the owner versus substantial impacts, versus arguing that this, what we're proposing is not substantial, but then also in terms of character, we think it's, it's substantial.
What you have there now is an existing stair to the attic?
Yes. It's like a, it's a tiny turning stair, so it's not like a co-compliant full stair, but it's like a high stair, but not a full, have a fixed stair.
If you have a fixed stair, it's unfinished.
We have a fixed stair, it is an attic that has a finished floor but not finished walls. We're not sure how Ed would interpret it. I think most likely we would be, if we went the other way, we'd have to pull the stair out and also pull out the floor finish to get to where we need it.
So, so how are you counting the attic of four of the renovation? Is it, you're counting it at a hundred percent?
Uh, I think we are counting, let me just make sure I'm correct here.
Yeah, we're counting it's finished. You're counting it's finished.
You represent the footnote that the existing attic has been calculated at a hundred percent.
Yeah, it is, because, well, the attic would do that. It's just, I mean, I'm sorry, the stair would do that. The very same, it doesn't matter if it's finished or not, so the intended object, but so you're, yeah, it is counted, it is counted as a hundred percent.
Okay. And the increase in FAR by the renovation?
It goes from about two thousand two hundred to two thousand eight hundred, so an increase of about six, so that's on three floors, so it's about two hundred square feet on each floor.
Okay. Now, John, go to zero point ten, oh, you're there, okay. You have the existing condition floor area diagram for the attic at six hundred and twenty-nine square feet, right? And then down below, you've got the proposed condition for the attic at the same number. Aren't you adding an attic?
Yes. So that, in this case, the attic space over here is being counted at zero percent, because in that area of the master suite, the ceiling is increasing. So the space underneath, the space of the attic is calculated from, is basically the height of the attic. So the height of the attic in that case, from the ceiling of the floor below, the ceiling of the floor above is less than five feet, so it's being counted, counted as non-finished space, and it's not accessed by a stair, because it's a mechanical roof, that's walled up.
Oh, it's walled up, the existing attic, we will not have access from the existing attic to the expanded attic?
No, you'll have access to the mechanical space from, through the master bedroom ceiling, through a scuttle. And again, this is, this is our way to make that count as, well, we need, we need a mechanical space. So part of it is we need a mechanical space for an air handler in the attic, in this case, because there's a cathedral ceiling or a higher ceiling that's, that makes the space in the attic only five feet, and not accessed by a stair, because it's, it's not connected, that it doesn't have to count as FAR. It counts as zero effectively. I think that's a good way.
No, I, I understand what you're saying, but what I, what I don't understand is, why would you want to put a scuttle in the ceiling of a master bedroom, rather than use the existing stair for access and leave that wall?
We don't, we don't want to. This, this is, this is how, this is what we're being forced to do, to try to keep the calculation. We don't necessarily want to. This is workable, the solution, this area wouldn't be used for storage anyway, but in order to keep the FAR calculation as low as we can, this is a strategy that we're using to do that. Right?
I mean, you've got the option to open up that wall and have access from the existing attic, right?
Right, and we also have an option right now to finish the attic and do other things. We're not, we're not arguing if doing anything illegal or doing something in the future.
It does seem somewhat artificial to me. I mean, you're, you're doing something very awkward in order to ostensibly reduce the number, so that it's not more than twenty-seven percent.
Right, but again, but again, you know, we're working within the requirements of the code and how, you know, this is something we've done, you know, this is something that suggests, you know, if you, if you want to reduce this, you know, we can do this. This is not, again, we could have left the floor, we, there's another way we can get here, we can leave the floor down at a lower level. You know, they're, they're, having the cathedral in the master is something that's comfortable, right? So raising the ceilings, there's something that we discussed anyway, we need a space to the attic. So it may seem like a game, gaming of the system to get to this point, but it actually has a functional basis for it, like there, the equipment is going to go up there, and we will have a master, you'll separate the master suite from the other rooms by having an elevated ceiling, and you don't have an FAR in that, because of the, like, less than FAR.
Part of the rationale for that is that, is that if the ceiling height in the, in the bedroom is greater than X, right, that counts as additional FAR.
Right. It's not like, this is not really as much of a, of a game as you may think. Like, you can't just raise the ceiling to above fourteen feet and then suddenly it doesn't count as FAR. There's a limit, as soon as you go about twelve feet, the code says, okay, once you go about twelve feet, you have to count that space as twice, you have to count it twice if there's, it's not like a wide open...
Now, one other question. I mean, if you replace the existing stair to the attic with a scuttle, you'd be, you wouldn't have to be here on an FAR basis, right?
Well, only if you didn't finish the attic, right?
Right. You also have to not finish the attic.
The change from permanent stair to scuttle doesn't get you to zero, the change from finished to unfinished gets you to zero.
You need to do both.
Yeah.
You need to do both.
Yeah.
Or you, do one, not do the other.
This is the question, like, so you get into these discussions about what modifications you could make to the inside of the house, and the discussion here, FAR is supposed to limit the volume of the house because it has visual impact and environmental impacts outside. Right, so we could, we could go down a path, and I think, you know, we may have to go down a path where you have a, an attic that is unfinished, there's access by a stair. The thing that I've seen in houses, especially in small houses, is what that does is it really works against, like, and so there's a sort of thing that we've done here with this attic code, we get into a situation where people are using an attic scuttle, where they could have a permanent stair, and they're storing things in an unfinished attic, which has a, not a good, you know, you could, there's a lot of situations, like, honestly, in your attic, you have a fire hazard, because you have exposed insulation in that attic, and you have stuff stored in that attic against exposed insulation. So there's things, interesting, but there's, there's things, there's things like that, that the finishing of the interior and the configuration of the interior stair cremated, it is just sort of accident of this code, and it's treated this way, right? It's, it's, it's a strange condition, and that's why I think what we're focusing on is like, if the concern is that the twenty-seven percent is a, a measure of, if being substantial, I'd argue that if we could take the, at the stair house, we can unfinished the attic, it would be less functional for them, it will, the house will be that much less valuable, you know, it will be that much less safe in a way we can do that, but I don't see what the benefit that is to the neighbors. I don't see what, what improvement that makes to the condition.
I don't think people walking by there will say, oh my God, look at that big house, because they finished the attic.
No, this is what I was saying. I bet they were storing it, so. Well, actually, what, what it does is it ends up being like, you know, we've got conversations like, well, I know their attic's finished, you know, like, based on our analysis, and I think, the thing is, we've just gotten a little bit off course here, and, and that's what I've argued, like, I think when I was in the layer, I was trying to argue, is like, instead of even thinking of it as a request for additional volume, what we're asking for is a request, would you please allow us to put a fixed stair and finish the attic, and within this volume that we think is quite right?
The way the code reads, there's a separate section, you cited two twenty-four, one thirty-seven, two several times, and properly so. Two twenty-four, one thirty-eight covers the procedure for FAR reviews, including zoning work of the fields, and they lay out in subsection C what has to be done by an applicant if they want a variance for the FAR, including elevations, photos, drawing scale of the houses on all sides of the house, photographs of the neighboring houses, floor area ratios of the neighboring houses within two hundred feet, and also whatever written or verbal testimony. I think, you know, you haven't given us all the photographs, we've all been around the area, to offer enough to see, see what's there. But in the A zero point one three, which is the calculation you submitted this time to the adjacent properties analysis, looking at the... looking at the properties within 200 feet, and I believe these are the same ones we talked about previously. If you look at the F A R 4B, which is right next to yours, on, on Woodbine.
On Woodbine.
On Woodbine.
Yeah.
And then G, which is across, which is south of you, also between Woodbine and Oak. And then K, which is of course a screen on Oak. And those three are the most immediate neighbors, and I think those are the ones within 200 feet. And the F A R on those three, as you've got it here in the chart, is 113, which is half of the overage you propose. And then the other two are 77 and 71% of the limits. So.
So, so that, that's the argument that I was sort of discussing earlier, is that in all those cases, in all those cases, in two of those cases, the attic is counted at, at zero percent.
No, I think they're 50%.
So.
The first one, the first one is zero.
The first one is zero, right?
And then the next two, you say, attic at 50%.
So which one is, I'm sorry, it's.
G and K, yeah.
G is 50%. Hey, it's 50%. So G is, is next to us on that side. So, so the, the argument for why G would have a lower F A R is because it's a double lot, right? It's, the Y comparison for that area, it's a much larger lot, and F A R is calculated based on the lot size. So that would be the argument for that one. B, the argument is similar sized lot, but again, the attic is counted at zero percent, so if you added that, you would be up to 30%. And then.
K is across the street.
Is this? K, I think it's, the house is an unexpanded house, so I mean, the house is similar.
It is capsular, it's a lot.
Unexpanded house. I think it's similar to the size of the house that their house is currently, so that's, I think, what the argument is there. It has a garage associated with it, and the garage would have F A R on set, right, so the garage, the 200 to 400 square feet that's associated with the garage has been taken out of that analysis, because garages don't count. So again, the overall volume of all of those properties, I think the volume of this property is going to be larger than what we're proposing. This one, the volume of this one is probably, if you add the garage, it might be a little less or similar.
But it's not, I mean, we have to deal with what's there, not, not what may be there.
No, I'm saying the volume of the F A R, I was saying the volume, the actual volume of the F A R. So, so, you know, that, that's what we're arguing, it's like, this, this, you know, there's two sides of it. I think the volume is consistent, like, this is volume of the F A R is consistent with what the neighbors are, consistent with the neighborhood. I think from the, from the impact and substantiality point of view, the very fact that we can revise the project to have a scuttle and unfinished attic means that, you know, this can't be, it can't be that substantial. Right, because we're always talking about changes within the building.
Okay. I think on this one, what I would like to do is to hear the thoughts of the board members, not just whether you have questions or comments for Mr. Malone, but I'd like to hear what you folks think. Start to the left, since you can, like.
I am. I don't see a reason to preclude a stair and the use of an attic in a space as otherwise allowable by right in this case. I can think of situations where I'd have been offended by it. I can think of an example on Riverview Road, where a developer, you know, built the max and promised that an area wouldn't be used as usable space, and then came back later, went after he sold the house, and he wanted to add that space on as a room. I thought that was a scam. I don't see this the same way. I see this as an attic that you want to put stuff to the store. They can do that, we're not telling them they can store stuff, or just tell them to pull down the staircase every time, climb up the stairs, find the lights. I mean, I, I have one of those staircases, I, if, if, if I'm in front, I just don't see that as an appropriate. I see the benefit of, you know, we can borrow away any concern that the builder should have on this case.
Well said.
I agree, I can, I agree.
I have to.
What drug did you guys take?
I have to agree with Evan. It makes no exterior difference, there, there's no difference in volume. Why make them use a scuttle or a drop down stairs or anything of that sort? I just don't see the point of it. Maybe it's a quarrel with the building code, but I just do not see any detrimental effect to anyone else.
Yeah, I agree.
You might have guessed from the comment I made, and I'm that, thank you, Mr. Chairman, I. I concur with Evan's comments on those of the others.
Yeah, I 100% agree, I think what people want to do in their own house here is their own business. I mean, I really don't think we have any place in this, I don't.
Well, you know, that's, that's interesting, I mean, I've thought about this a lot, and there, there are chances at this point that your application will be approved. But, but it, it seems to me, basically, what we're being asked to do here is to simply ignore what the code says. And the code is not perfect, it has lots of flaws. This sort of reminds me of jury nullification. I almost made it onto a jury once, and that's ultimately what they did. It would have been very interesting to sit in the jury room and go through that. I don't think the rule makes a lot of sense in this circumstance, it might, you know, when there's some obvious attempt to abuse the system, which has not happened here. But that's what the pre-composed says, and I am, I guess where I'm going to come out on this, especially given the feelings of my colleagues, is to move to approve this, but to do something with board trustees.
I'd be happy to help with that.
To make, to make them understand that the rule just, you know, it's not, it's not creating the benefit that they think they were trying to create when they put this through.
Yeah, I think it's right for abuse too, because I do think builders build up to the empty, I agree, but then put.
Without talking.
Right, but then put in unfinished.
On the other side, I think I may have touched with you guys last time, is that the, the role of reducing attic level of F A R is to promote slow throughs, right? That's originally how it started, where you start to promote people doing gables, as opposed to going up to the maximum of 35 feet with a flat roof. And what this does is promote flat roofs, it does the opposite. And I, I think, it is, it's just something that, I think it's just gone awry, and I think maybe there's a concern about life safety, or people putting bedrooms in their attic or something. I don't know what drove it, but it's not a zoning issue, it's something else that drove it.
So I see those as more bedrooms than you'd want, and, you know, things like that, you know, that's your apartment, Simon City. But, but I don't understand, should the extended limit storage in an attic, and making that safe, that just doesn't make sense to me.
And if it makes you feel better, the code doesn't power us to get there, and it's 100%.
I didn't know that.
So I'm following your code.
My goodness, what answer every, every objection there is, wasn't it? I remember that one. Okay.
There you go.
The reasons articulated by lots of people, I will move to approve this, do I have a second? All right, let's vote from the right, Sean?
Yes.
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 Yes.